...leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today is Monday, November 4th, 2019. Time is 7:00 PM in the regular meeting in Greensboro. City Council's called order. This time please silence electronic devices. If you comply with Title VI, the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four. The city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey as available on the table in the back room. Actually, we did a little call.
Ryan, Ryan McHenry here. That's me, twenty-one.
Here.
Darren Holman.
Here.
And Darren Covington and Jamie Kane are absent.
Got a text from Darren, he was on the way to our meeting in Indianapolis. Jamie is out of, uh, out of the country voluntarily.
Yeah. Okay.
I didn't put him on the line.
Okay, um, everyone should've got minutes from last night. Uh, October 7th, two thousand nineteen. Any corrections to the minutes? Um, Jerry, any?
Motion overruled.
Motion second.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so pass. Okay. Old business. Ashley? You want to discuss your animal control?
Yes, and everybody get their revised hobby I've done this morning. So we pulled out the can portion and we focused more on the condition of the animals in which they would be living. Um, so we don't set a number on it, but it will be strictly the condition, um, animal wastes and the veterinary care that they can afford is what we will be going by.
Is it a tab number?
No, we were moving forward orders?
Yeah.
No, we wanted to discuss and then we'll give up the orders, um, later. But I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. What's your full contribution? What you have in the L? Do you want to use your request?
Correct. Uh, last month when I came in, we already discussed, uh, the weather ordinance portion. So the only thing I had to revise was the count portion, uh, because we were looking at the boarding situations.
Okay. Do you have any more discussion on the temperature part? Okay. So the other responsibility of the agreement. Very well. So what we'll do is we'll set this up in the mornings and we'll bring it back to you in December. But I want to kind of go over this first, make sure that we're all on the same page. That's all you need, this, this, you're right?
Yes.
I went out and emailed today and I think everything was addressed.
Okay. Yeah. Chris, we'll, if you're all, orders for, then we'll have it.
We're gonna continue the ordinance that we currently have and where it will fall into place, it'll be a little easier for you.
Okay.
I think that's it to you. Um, please say.
Uh, work, thanks.
Great, thanks, guys.
Okay, um, that's all the old business. Uh, new business, uh, fire safety donation. Ordinance four to nineteen thirty-five. Basically just transferring money or moving the items from, uh, to the account of the ten thousand. This is coming out of fire safety and donation. So, any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to...
Motion to per ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-five.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, so pass. This one, we could go ahead and do the second reason. This is not fine. No? Okay. So we'll have to bring that back in December. Okay. Okay. Chief Rith, are you...
I got one more thing. Uh, I, I touched base with people last meeting about the grant for the SCBA's. Well, we got denied again. So that's about three times that we applied for it. So, uh, I'm going to try to get, take the money out of, uh, one of the cumulative fire funds I have and I'll probably approach you next month on this. I went to Board of Works today and just gave a notification of it. That is the cost of what the item is on the back page. It's pretty pricey, so I just, just making sure that you know what's going on. Uh, it's an MSA air pack. It's around two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. This item lasts approximately fifteen years. We use them all the time. The other ones are really at the end of their life cycle. And we're like four, uh, revolutions on that pass what NFPA requires on it. So I'm just, uh, I have funding in other funds and, like I said, come December I'll probably approach the council about going through and procuring these items.
So thirty-one air packs?
Yes, there's thirty-nine air packs. Thirty-one of them, uh, will be basic air packs. I have eight of them with thermal imaging cameras in them. So when we get out, we go into the structure, turn it on, we can see what's going on, where the fire is, through the smoke and everything. There's a billion to it. Uh, the last two weeks, we've been training on this, uh, air pack, the MSA and the Scott air pack. We've, with the guys, we found that MSA is more better for us.
Did you get a photo of the Scott air packs?
No, I did not, because I won't be comparing apples to apples. Uh, with these here, every unit don't have a thermal imaging camera. If I go with Scott, we have to put a thermal imaging camera in every mask. So every mask, the display is right there of what they're looking at. So that's about additional fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars per mask. And we're getting like, uh, thirty-nine, forty, about forty-three masks. So that's additional money. So I, I can, if you want me to give it, but we're not comparing it really apples to apples.
This state bid?
Yes. In two thousand twenty, I lose approximately around thirty-five, forty bottles. Those bottles are eight hundred fifty dollars a piece. And I, you know, we're going to forty-five hundred, which is a better, a smaller bottle, but it gives you more firefighting minutes in a structure. Uh, these here will give us about maybe approximately, I don't know, maybe thirty minutes inside the structure. The other ones gives us fifteen, sixteen minutes inside the structure, so...
Also in there, they got the RIFs.
Yeah, we have a RIF, there's three, uh, RIF bags in the second one. That's fourteen thousand dollars. Those are rescue kits. If we have a person inside, the structure needs assistance. One of our firefighters, anybody else, we grab that bag. We take it with us. Inside that bag's an air bottle and a mask. So we can get that on the victim or our own person and to start doing, that's under May Day situation most likely. If it's a rescue situation, we're gonna grab the person, get them out there as soon as possible. But, uh, we're required, we are required to have RIF bags, so anything you do with public safety, you know, it's expensive. But if we have one person injured, injured because of the old packs, it's gonna cost a lot more than what this two hundred sixty-seven thousand is now being, now compared to what it would be.
Uh, like Steve said, we do have the funds.
We do have the funding for it, so that's why we bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Chief Rith.
Didn't you go...
Someone stole my seat.
Good evening.
Good.
First thing on the agenda is asking for an additional appropriation on the public safety for overtime. Unfortunately, we have experienced some, uh, bigger cases in the past couple of months to where, uh, we were paying out a lot of overtime and that, uh, so I'm asking for that, uh, replaced into my overtime funds.
This is kind of, uh, safe.
Yes.
Make motion to pass, uh, twenty nineteen dash thirty-four.
Second.
Any other questions? All the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Close?
Okay, the next thing is the, uh, UTV that we have talked about, the ordinance for, uh, usage on Greensboro roadways. I did not know if anybody had any additions, corrections they wanted to possibly add to that before I actually take the full ordinance to the city attorney. Uh, and again, I will be noting in there about, um, lawn mowers and golf carts not being permitted on the roadway. But I excited to not know if there was anything that I needed possibly change or if we wanted to table this until the other two came back in December, so it's completely up to...
I would rather everyone be... Sorry. I would make motion to take the...
And then I'm, um, I'll probably at least plan on getting something to the city attorney, just kind of an outline with that and with the fireworks. That way, both of those ordinances are kind of at least pushed out there. See?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Water treatment.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm here tonight to kind of give you an update on a new surface water treatment plant. I give monthly updates to the water board, but I decided we probably ought to give you counsel, the Board of Public Works, like quarterly updates or so, just that it is a big project, so you understand where we're all at on that. So that's what I'm here tonight for, so, and I apologize for anybody here for the Board of Works, we're gonna hear a very similar discussion.
Just a different day.
Uh, kind of give you a brief overview of the project, so you a little bit, uh, it is a new five and a half MGD surface water treatment plant that will include two new solids contact clarifiers, big circular tanks, a filter building with roughly eight gravity filters. It also includes new chemical feed systems for both sodium hypo, aluminum sulfate, powder activated carbon and fluor, uh, fluoride. I will not try to say that word, I cannot say that one, I'm trying. Um, it also includes a point eight, almost a million gallon of pinch water storage tank, uh, while there's a pump electric building. Uh, the treatment, our treatment plant also has office space, uh, lockers, lab facilities, some storage things as well. Uh, there is a field ops building that we're calling that, that's kind of a vehicle maintenance storage as well as some additional spaces for the, uh, the, the crew that's out in the fi, uh, distribution system. So it's got, one of the things it does have in locker, and we're also putting in industrial, um, um, washer dryers, so that they'll be able to, be able, if they're, when they're cold like that, dealing with the wet, they'll have a place to be able to come back and get cleaned up. Uh, the last important point is also the existing plants, one and two, will be decommissioned or demolished. A little bit about the schedule, uh, Notice Proceed was issued in June twenty-eighth of this year. Uh, contractor mobilized roughly a month later. We did have groundbreaking, some of you were attending on the thirty-first of July. Our partial completion is, uh, sub-completion there is May twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one. Uh, final sub, uh, substantial completion is December, Christmas Eve of twenty twenty-one, uh, with final completion in January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. Kind of give you an idea of where we're at now. Um, there's been a hundred twenty-five days since Notice Proceed, um, till the first substantial completion, and that is really to basically get the new plant up and running so that they, what we have to do there is we have to have the new plant online and the old plant online at the same time and be able to make sure that the new plant is functioning before we pull the older offline. So there's a transition of roughly three and a half weeks there where either plant can be, be utilized, because obviously we can't just stop making tree water. So there is that transition period, so that's part of the reason why there's two substantial completion dates, because some of the work contractor can't skip until after that date, uh, after that's completed, the new facilities are brought along, so that's the reason for that. Um, like I said, we're about a hundred and twenty-five days from Notice Proceed for the first substantial. Means they still have roughly five hundred and seventy-five days to get that first substantial completion, so it's a thirty-plus month project and we're only about three and a half, four months into it, so kind of give you an idea of where we're at in, in this overall schedule. Got a couple, rest of here will be a couple photos and stuff, kind of talking about the various things that's under, that's currently being built. Uh, that's a picture of all, is that the groundbreaking? There's a couple more, a couple more photos, the groundbreaking, mayor, uh, giving a speech there. Um, I was pretty, pretty pleased with the attendance of that there. I think there was roughly somewhere between thirty and forty people there for that, so that's actually, I was very pleased with how many people turned out for that. Uh, a little bit about the contractor. Contractor is F.A. Wilhelm, they're out in Indianapolis. Uh, the construction cost, uh, is high two million nine eighty-seven, just under twenty million. Uh, cost to date, uh, will be, water board will be approving, uh, pay request, which will bring them to a little over two point eight million, uh, which is roughly fourteen percent of the total project cost at this point in time, so kind of gives a rough rate there. Here's kind of a, uh, we did a computer modeling to kind of give you an idea of what the new facilities will look like. Um, kind of give you an idea, this back here would be Four Street. This here is Old Ireland Street, and then this right here would be where Fifth Street, this is the cul-de-sac for Fifth Street. So what we're gonna talk about, here's the new surf, uh, the solids contact clarifiers. Uh, this is the Clearwell, we'll talk a lot about that here a little bit. This is a pump and electrical building, and then this is the main treatment plant with this end on this end here is, uh, chemical feed. Back here is the filters and kind of in the middle is the office area. And then the, uh, the field ops building is right here, which is where the current plate number one is. You can see the kind of the tall, um, treatment plant there, that's plate number three. That was built in two thousand eight, that's still will be, uh, utilized for treating groundwater. Uh, we're making a few minor changes to that, for the most part, it is still, it's still being used. Now we'll go on some pictures of the construction. Here we got the drilling of some earth retention systems because of the tight sites and the facilities are very close to the property lines, so we had to protect, uh, the prop, uh, adjacent property owners and also we're, we're about twenty feet deep here to keep the soil from caving in on us, so... You can see they're drilling some of the H piles there as well. We got a surrounding, this is kind of on the, I mean, idea, this is the southeast, our southeast corner of the property site. Plate number three lies over here, um, and that house there actually faces Fifth Street, so that gives you an idea. North would be to the left up here. And there's some lagging that goes between the piles and the start of the earth retention system. And then there's some more of that that worked around to the east, uh, along the east side there, and then up there again, there's, there's Fifth Street up there, so there's the excavation for the, uh, Clearwell starting there. And here's some more, this is about, uh, final grade for the bottom, uh, excavation for the Clearwell. Here you can get a little better perspective of the size of the crane, how deep we are. Uh, grade is, you can see a practical grade is, and that's, um, finished grade will be very similar to that again, um, so this tank here, well, actually it's about, uh, a little over twenty feet, right at twenty feet. Uh, we're burying all but about six feet of it, it's buried into the ground. Um, here they're drilling the micro piles. Um, one of the things we had to do, uh, because this tank, to be able to take it out of service in rain, it actually has more of a trouble with the potential for it to float or uplift, so we had to drill a series of micro piles to anchor it so that, um, to help, uh, restrain any uplift from that empty tank. That's what they're doing here. There's some more of those as well. And then you can start to see they're starting to put the stone down for the foundation. You can see each one of these little things was a micro pile that they drilled. Uh, I think they drilled, I think over a hundred, there's over a hundred of them that they drilled. And now here's the, this is the Clearwell. Here we're starting to put in, uh, the slab reinforcing steel. Um, this tank is, uh, what's called a post-tension tank. Uh, after it will be, after it's poured, the blue cables in there, you can see the blue ones there, they will actually be, uh, tensionally put on in there. The idea behind post-tensioning is to basically create a little better tank, better concrete tank. Concrete inherently will crack no matter what you do. The idea behind this is to try to mitigate that or minimize the amount of cracking that goes on. It's supposed to buy you additional, uh, life expectancy of the tank. Uh, we only did it on this tank because it's one of the critical features that does it, typically it's tough to take out of service for any repairs. It is the final finished water. I mean, that's just, basically this is a tank where they pump into the, uh, distribution system, so it's a tougher tank to take out of service compared to, we've got eight filters, we can take a filter down pretty easily, or we got two solids contact clarifier, we can take one of those down. This tank here, we did, we are dividing it into two tanks so that you can take a portion of it down and still have a portion operating to do maintenance on it, so... Uh, that's just a picture of some of the micro piling that was done, it helps anchor it in. And now we're starting, uh, to pour concrete. This was probably, I think, the first week of October. Uh, they poured the entire slab at one, at one pour, it was a little over three hundred cubic yards. That's probably the biggest pour they'll do on the entire project. Um, that's, that's a pretty big pour. My first treatment plan I did coming out of school, I did the entire treatment plan, did four three hundred yards of concrete, it was a small town. Uh, and there's the finished, uh, tank, uh, slab, it's kind of like an ice skating rink at this point in time. Uh, and then, uh, here, we're starting to put the, uh, forms up and pouring the walls, and then we also have some rebar here, which is the pillars, which will support the roof. Uh, they get those spaced equally throughout the tank. And here's some, uh, reinforcing for the wall. And you can see too, we also have some post-tensioning in the wall as well. That's all the white lines, uh, white cables there are. And this is the first, uh, you see this first pour here they've done, a couple of the pillars they've done. This is the first of seven pours. It will take seven different pours to, uh, pour that complete walls of this tank. Uh, they average probably about, uh, they're hoping to do at least a pour, they do about two pours a week, uh, depending on where they're at. They may not get two every week, but, uh, they should get, they'll do two and then they'll do, take them a little bit and they'll get another two, so their goal is to have this done fairly, uh, pretty quickly actually, so... And now we'll move on to another structure. This is the pump, uh, pump and electric building, this is the excavation for the wet well with that. Basically, this is the structure where the pumps will set, it will pull one route of the Clearwell and then pump it into the distribution, so... And you can see again in the background, this is, this is probably early, um, this is in September sometime. You see they hadn't got much work done on the, um, tank, or the Clearwell itself, and they actually started this foundation first. They're gonna get ready to pour concrete, there's a finished slab they poured. Yeah, I think that's around fifty cubic yards, maybe less, a little less than that. And then here's the start of, uh, the walls, um, putting the steel up for that, uh, that Clearwell. Again, you'll start to see here in a minute, that, a couple photos later, that most of this is all, it gets, it's already buried, so this is early on. Uh, here's their pouring, a second pour, I think they poured that in four, three pours. And then this is, now you can get a little time, this is earlier, uh, you see they hadn't started doing slab yet, but the micro piles are in place, and they're building, uh, some step foundations here. This is the wet well, that structure you saw before with about seventeen foot tall, we've already buried probably eight to ten feet of it at this point in time. The finished grade, it'd be somewhere about there, so this is a little bit elevated. The top of this wall will be the finished slab of the building itself, so it actually will have three or four steps up to the, uh, the roof itself. And then, obviously, we have a lot of power with this plant, and here's some, some of the electrical conduit that's being stubbed out of this structure. Basically, the pump and electric building, the one side has got the, the pumps on, at the other side is basically the, the electrical control room, basically all the power comes in here, and then is distributed out to the rest of the facilities for this one structure. So that's what all this conduit there is. Uh, and this is just another foundation, I think the last of the foundation walls for the, uh, pump and electrical building. Again, you can see most of it's been, a lot of it's been buried just by this point in time. This was about a week and a half ago, I think, by the way. Now we'll switch to, uh, earlier time, this is the water treatment plant, the foundation of that. Um, basically this structure, uh, the lower level is, uh, the pipe gallery and that sort of thing, it's a T shape, so this is the lay, then this is the cross member of the T, so that's the foundation. And what they're pouring there is just a sump pump, um, for that, for this building. And you can see they're starting to tie in the floor drains, prior getting ready to put the slab in place. There they've got the stone for the slab and started forming up the foundation, part of the slab, the walls, steel's all in place. Um, this would have been sometime late September, if I remember right. And there, there they're pouring the slab from that day. That was fif, that was fifty-four cubic yards that pour that day. Uh, this is just a wall sleeve, there's a couple things, any wall penetrations into these, uh, these tanks have these wall sleeves to keep the water tight, and, and you can also see it's got a lot of rebar steel that's, um, to resist everything, it steals about every six to eight inches in place, so they had a hard time sometimes getting concrete to go in there. And there's the finished walls of that, uh, structure, the treatment plant, we're looking to the south, that's existing plate number three, we're looking toward, uh, Fourth Street. Uh, this will be the pipe gallery, and you can see this, this is, each of these two pipings will be for the filters, that will be built to both sides, and then there's a total of four, you won't see the other piping penetrations, they're back this way. Uh, I believe they've got four out of five pours, or three out of five pours. I, I think they're supposed to finish up the last pour this week on the, on the walls for this structure, so then they'll start building this up even more. And lastly, we also got to bring some of the piping to connect here. Um, again, this is a very tight site, so we're basically, they're starting, you hit to one corner, they're working their way out, at the same time, they start the lowest area and work their way up. They're, you know, everything gets kind of overlapped and they have to fit everything, it's kind of like a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle, getting everything fit in. And you can see, obviously, we, we didn't necessarily make the straightest run through here, we're, this is to avoid something that's above it or going around it, so there's some of the backwash, that's a backwash supply for the filters that's being installed. There's some of the backwa- that's a backwash supply for the filters that's being installed. And there's another shot of that, that's the rest of that pipe run, um, they've, it will tie into this building right here. The ductal arm pipe, we wrap it with a poly bag, basically it looks like a garbage bag. It's to protect the ductal arm pipe in case the soil has any corrosiveness to it, so it's a, it's a, just another added layer of protection for the pipe itself. That's it, any questions? Like I said, we are roughly four months into a thirty-plus-month project, so it's, it's just getting started. So far, they've taken advantage of the real nice fall weather, made pretty good progress. I won't say they're ahead of schedule at this point, but they're, they're not behind schedule either, so. Hopefully, they'll be able to be a little, a little ahead, because we're coming into some time of the year that doesn't necessarily is advantageous for construction. They are planning to try to get most of these structures out, out of the ground, so that they can work all winter long, so.
Questions?
Questions? Thank you, I'll try to, I'll try to get back here on either, about every three or four minutes or something, give you enough time to have some more photos. Eventually, we'll get to where we have some actual buildings that look a little better, these concrete rebar, so.
Thanks, Derek.
Okay. That better stay parade, it's going to eleven, five P M. downtown. If you walk from, uh, Skellon now, north to the monument downtown. You can go, you can rise and go. Also, I gave you some highlights from the city the last four years, like, maybe as the council and the mayor, um, some of the projects that we've done and completed. Just want to be aware of what, what we've done for the last three years. Not good enough that you guys helped, so. Also, this is no shape, no river, and it's health and cancer awareness, so, I mean, it'll go grubby, but, well, it's not grubby, but anyway. But it's constantly, uh, no shape, so.
Board of Works report, uh, Ron May came to the Board of Works to announce that on October twenty-fourth, Greensburg was awarded the four, uh, matching grants in the amount of five-hundred-and-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-one dollars and eighty-six cents. These are for, uh, for the paving projects, I've got the list here, if you'd like to take a look at it later. And that five-hundred-and-four plus thousand dollars was a little bit higher than what the bids had come in for, so, we're in good shape there. Tara Hagan from A R A brought pay application number seven, and, uh, for the Main Street project. That was to Shute Excavating for ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Brian Robbins, uh, came to the board asking for sixteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for, uh, or asked for permission to partner with Key Research, and this is to do an income survey, um, and this will help us with securing grants. And Ron May also came back with a local roads and bridges matching grant agreement, and we all signed that. Jeff Smith asked for permission to dispose of a two-thousand-two Dodge truck, had transmission problems, uh, we're in issues. We're giving it to the fire department for training, and then it will be disposed of. Chief Bridges, permission to purchase a vehicle, this vehicle is a Ford Explorer. Be purchased from Don Meyer, and this will come out of the twenty-twenty budget that was approved. The reason that we're striking a little bit early on that is because of the, uh, the wait time, is that correct to you?
Yes.
You really need to sit over here, because you can't teach an old dog new tricks. Uh, and, uh, we saw part one of Darren Burke's presentation. And then, uh, Christian Rust, uh, are you willing to speak to the council, Christian?
Sure, I would like for it to, I mean, it's exciting news for a lot of people.
Good news, that he can stay up there a lot better than I can repeat it.
Yes. Hello, I'm Christian Rust, the Washington Township trustee, and, uh, we are purchasing two, uh, fire trucks. We're replacing three of them with two, getting rid of engine, uh, four, excuse me, truck fourteen, or tanker fourteen and truck eleven. Uh, so, those will be sold, looks like we have some folks that are interested in engine four right now. And, uh, we should be receiving the new trucks in three-hundred-and-sixty days and four-hundred-and-thirty-five days. So, uh, they are Spartan brand, uh, they are, they're gonna be outfitted with, uh, some extra foam tanks that, uh, help put out different types of fires. I understand when we respond to, uh, vehicle fires in particular, you never know what fuel source is anymore. So, uh, we'll assist with that and, uh, a lot of the things, chemical fires and stuff like that. They, the, uh, mayor asked if the, the size of the tanks, uh, the tanker will be a two-thousand-gallon tanker. It'll be a rescue-style body, and the pumper will have twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallons on it as well, so they are very good. We're gonna be heading up to South Dakota in first part of December to do the first bit of pre-con for those trucks. And, uh, we'll make two or three subsequent trips to South Dakota, uh, to ensure that they are built exactly, exactly as. Do you have any questions?
No, I, I think, yeah, very, very good.
Yeah, these, the trucks were settling, uh, we're not just out buying new stuff, uh, for the sake of buying new stuff. We are purchasing, uh, we're getting rid of a nineteen-eighty-three or nineteen-eighty-four tanker, and a nineteen-ninety-seven, uh, truck, and a two-thousand-and-one engine. Uh, the two-thousand-and-one is stationed at the, uh, Washington Township Greensburg Station Two, and, uh, that gets used a whole lot. So, it's got a lot of miles, and we're passing it on to hopefully a, uh, hopefully a, um, department nearby who'd be interested in purchasing that.
Will you wait till we get the, the new truck?
Um, the, yeah, the, it'll be, uh, pretty close to that. Uh, the department is, uh, chomping at the bit to get, uh, that new truck, to get new, new to them truck, that's, he's talking about engine four. Uh, we, uh, we haven't come to a conclusion on that, because we have, we don't have a set-in-stone delivery date, uh, as of now.
We'll be waiting on, if we can, before we get a new, you know, we're getting a new truck.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right, and it will take a little bit of time for the guys to get trained on this new apparatus. The, uh, engine four is a, is a pumper, and it has a pump panel on both sides of the apparatus that allow it to be, uh, used. And many people, uh, the pumps, sorry, will be, uh, used from both sides of the truck, so, uh, they can, they don't have to always pull up on one side, or they don't have to take a step up to work on the, work with the pumps and things, so.
Okay, any questions? Good deal.
Well, thanks.
One thing I failed to mention, uh, Mayor, was, uh, Chief Bridges, uh, he also talked to us about a, uh, asked for permission to transfer some equipment, it's a cage, and to transfer that to, uh, Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. We have no use for it, and they do, out of goodwill.
That was a little poor, ladies, came down back, so, this will help get them out a little bit. So, we don't have to get our dogs out running after, it was a good experience, so. Her, please?
Yes.
He was the founder, so, that was awesome, so. So, that was, any else? Just remind you all, vote tomorrow if you already have it. Go, Mary. Okay?
She went right here.
Yes, please, second? All the bears, they are?